That you give us, Father, we know everything you give us is good for us. And at this time, Father, we just seek your guidance, your wisdom, to help us discuss the things necessary for this district. Thanks for each and everyone that's here tonight and for all the, and what they do for this district. Father bless us, guide us, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
All right, we're going to change the order just a little bit so we can go into recognition. Dr. Deere?
Good evening, Board. So, the stuff from 23, 24, no, 22, 23, sorry, I've already moved on, is still coming in, and the recognition for our kids, really excited about all the things they did, and just want to take a moment to congratulate Coach Mays. You know, these kids exceeding and succeeding in life is really because we have coaches that are spending the time out there with them, moments throughout the day, and extra time and everything else, to help them be able to practice and do the work it takes to accomplish the things they do. So always grateful for our coaches. Tonight, it's softball, and really grateful for Coach Russ Mays and the work the softball team did. They had a great season. So without further ado, I'll let Coach Mays talk about Cadence a little bit.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. I know it was a great year, a large part to the rest of the team, but this young lady here was honored for the Texas Sportswriters First Team Off-State. I've coached 25 years, the first time I've ever had anybody listed to the First Team Off-State on the Sportswriters. TGCA is usually a little easier to get on, but for some reason she got overlooked for that and made the Hard Team on First Team. So, the First Team is usually littered with nothing but people that made the state tournament, so the fact that she made First Team as a pitcher, shortstop, and hitter is a true testament to her hard work. And, so, we're extremely proud of her. She'll be a senior next year, so we got one more year with her, so we're extremely proud of her and excited about next year. So, Cadence? Just kidding. But thank you all very much.
a workshop.
It's been a few months.
Ms. Aubrey, can you make sure you get very close to the mic?
I'm not close enough.
Not close enough. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, so it's been a few months since I've been here, and so we wanted to just give you an overall update on the 2021 bond projects, specifically the financial side of things, and then the construction updates will come during the regular board meeting. We wanted to focus on how allowances and contingencies are doing, and look at a potential need for a change order for high school Phase Two, and potentially adding some scope to high school Phase Three. So that is where we're headed. On the first page, you'll see a spreadsheet that lists all of the construction projects with the construction budgets, and just a reminder, the difference between construction budgets and project budgets, this is strictly construction cost, the contract that you have with S&amp;P and with Reader. This does not include the total project cost, that also has design fees and contingencies and furniture and equipment, and all of the other parts and pieces that go into a project. So looking at the construction costs, the next column over, you see the allowances and contingencies that are included within that construction cost for each project. Generally speaking, for new construction, we do around 3% contingency. For additions and renovations, we'll do 4% to 5% contingencies. And then there's some additional allowances for electrical service, vocational equipment, some specific line items also included in those numbers. So that was their starting balance. The next column over, you can see what's been approved for each of those projects so far out of those contingencies. And then there's also some pending numbers, some numbers that we anticipate coming from the contractor based off of known items, whether it be changes on the owner's side and all, or just some circumstances that have come up on construction that need to be addressed. And so that is the, what I said, 80% of pending. Not everything in the pending column in our day-to-day work session gets approved. So we're assuming 80% of what is in the pending column ends up being approved. And so, you've got your approved, you've got your pending, and then from here to the end of the project, there's going to be more things that come up. And so we're assuming 2.5% of the unbilled portion of the, of the contract needs to remain reserved in contingency funds to get us through to the end for anything else that comes up between now and the end. And so at the very right column, once you factor all of that, you see the balances that remain for each project in allowances and contingencies. For Pleasant View Elementary, you see a balance of $353,000. That project is complete, and so this number should be very close to the final number that comes back to you all in unused contingency funds. Additionally, just talking about that project as a whole, we were a little under budget on FFNE and a little under budget on soft costs, so you should see over $700,000 come under budget on the total project cost on the elementary school. For tennis, you see a surplus of $23,000 in contingency funds. Again, that project is complete, and that change order has already been written for those funds. And then for the high school Phase Two, this is where you see a negative number, and this is a working number, not a final number, but we're showing negative $916,000 potentially. And we're going to go in in just a minute and explain what that number means. And then on high school Phase Three, you're seeing a potential surplus of $700,000 in that project. So all projects combined, you have a surplus of $172,000 in contingency funds as projected right now. So no, this is still an estimate as construction is still in progress, but this gives us a guideline for the conversation we're about to have. Any initial questions on that?
I have a question. The 2.5% that you are assuming, where does that number come from? Is that just an average of what you see in past projects? And where some of my concern comes from is we're in a whole new world, and so if we're comparing it to past projects, we all know that the costs are so much different than they were even five years ago. So where did that number come from?
I think it is a, yeah.
And how confident are you in that number?
I think it is a general rule of thumb. Like I said at the beginning of a project, specifically high school Phase Two, because it's an addition renovation, but not a super messy 50-year-old building-type renovation, we went with 4% on those contingencies. As a project nears the end, the spending of those contingencies should really dwindle as you get down to that finish line. And so while we started with 4%, we think we're far enough along that 2.5% is reasonable to, to expect for possible expenditures. Okay.
So are there any questions over that page?
So does, does everyone understand that the Pleasant View, we've got, we're looking at $353,000 left over, and that includes, you know, we spent a little money to get, to accelerate the schedule, that includes that. So we're still, we're still under, under the budget on Pleasant View.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to dig in a little bit more on high school Phase Two, and why that number's in the red, and what we're requesting of you. So the next page again reflects a potential change order for you all to consider of a little over $900,000. Again, it's a working number, it's in flux, so S&amp;P and S and Dr. Deere are still in conversations about where that lands. But why, you know, why are, why have we overextended our contingency balance? I listed a bunch of dates here for you, but let me just give you the big picture. If you recall, when you all awarded the contract, I think it was May 11th of '22, the GMP guaranteed maximum price of two S&amp;P, they used bid documents that were issued January 21st, and that was probably four to six weeks earlier than we really wanted to issue them as far as them being 100% complete. All parties at the time agreed to issue an early bid set. It's common, semi-common practice, this isn't completely unusual, but we all agreed to issue an early bid set, knowing there were still going to be some things that come out of our internal quality control review, some details to be tweaked, and some things like that, that would not be in it, because if you recall, that's when escalation was really starting to take off, and estimated around 2% a month. So if we could bid a project a month or more early, then hopefully we're saving on that 2% escalation cost. And then, we, there are also a lot of long lead items, electrical switchgear, roofing, getting all of that acquired. So the sooner we could get those numbers locked in, and the sooner, sooner we could get in the queue for those items, the better in that respect as well. So that's why we all agreed to bid an early set, but in doing so, like I said, there were still some things that weren't 100% complete in those documents, and those items did end up having a cost impact. So if we had waited those four to six weeks, 100% completed the documents and issued a bid set, the costs that you'll see here are reflective of what that cost would have been on bid day had we waited until the normal timeframe to bid the project. So the numbers that you see in the middle of the page, what we, what we're calling the conformance set, that is the updated set from the bid set to what they actually use for construction, that included our internal QC review in, in those items. We're totaling around $800,000 in additions due to that. And then the other issue that we've had on the high school is JSED. Johnson County did not look at the documents when they were first submitted, even after many follow-ups. I believe we first submitted our documents to them in October or November of '21. We did not receive comments from them until May of '22, well after the construction contract had been awarded. And so there was some back and forth over the summer working that out, and we did not get plan approval from JSED until August of '22. So there was no way to foresee the changes that they requested of the school district and get those in the documents. So that's an additional $228,000. So those two items combined are just over $1 million. So again, had the construction documents been completed, bid it as normal, those costs would have been in there, in the price that you would have awarded. In comparison, had we waited the month or however long to bid, if we add another 2% escalation to what you did award originally, you're looking at an increase of $1.3 million. So we're still netting better by almost $300,000 by bidding it early, even though there are some significant additional costs that need to be addressed here. Below that, you can see the list of items that do have a cost impact related to the conformance set and JSED. Any specific questions on, on how we got there? Okay. The next page, I think, is going to help put it all together. The next page, we're moving from construction costs to total project costs. So this includes all your soft costs, your furniture and equipment and all of that. And you can see all of the projects listed, that the total project costs are $169,700. Other expenses related to the bond are some land purchases, some buses, and then if you recall, when the bond was called and passed, there were some direct stadium costs such as seats, the track, the football field replacement, that were going to be funded by the 2015 bond. And so you'll see that subtracted out of there. And so the total bond cost, total bond expenditures as projected right now are just over $172,000. And then the next table, you'll see the available funds. As you know, the bond was called for $168,500, and then with the bond interest of, current bond interest and projected bond interest of almost $5 million, you'll see the funds available are at $173,400. So between the projected expenditures and the funds available, you still have a surplus of $1.1 million. So that's the, that's the good news. If you were to consider this change order for high school Phase Two, and that's just to help us get to the finish line, anything that's not spent comes back to you in the end. If you were to approve a $900-plus thousand change order, you would still have a surplus of $243,000 in the bond. If that's a little too close for comfort, there's a few other things that we have talked about, such as potentially only spending 90% of the FFNE budget on Phase Two until we get to the end of the project and know where things stand, and then if the money's available, spend the remainder to purchase the, remainder of the furniture that's desired. That could be a potential $800,000 that could be reallocated or postponed. Okay, so that's it on Phase Two. Before I jump to Phase Three, which is a different topic, do you have questions on that?
What would the 90%, what would that number be?
You'd save about $800,000. That would, that would be the 10%.
I mean, like, so you're asking us to consider a change order for $916,000, if I'm understanding correctly? So if we did the other option of just spending the 90%, what would that change order be? I don't have a calculator, so.
It would still be a change order because of that money, we're talking about construction contract versus total project cost, but we would, so you would still write the $900,000 change order, and we just wouldn't spend $800,000 in furniture.
Okay, so it wouldn't change the change order request?
Right, but it would be a net gain of $800,000.
Okay.
Topic number two, Phase Three, considering some added scope. We've talked about renovating legacy practice field back behind that campus, the reason being the high school field is going to go down for a little while after football season while it undergoes renovation. And so if we renovate legacy, then there's another field available within the district that has lights, that has seats, and can be used for competition for soccer or whatever other needs you have. The cost for that, which includes grading, drainage, irrigation, and sod, is $720,000. The numbers presented to you tonight in the Phase Three contingency does include this. And so you would still, as in, if everything comes to fruition as anticipated, have a surplus of 700, a little over $700,000 in Phase Three. So if this is something you would consider to do, and you're okay doing it within the current Phase Three funds, we can move forward with that scope as soon as we get that signed off on. As another option, if you would prefer to fund it with remaining funds from the 2015 bond, that is another option. So you have a little more cushion in the 2021 bond. We probably would request a change order in that sense, just for tracking purposes of those costs. But again, in the end, any unused funds, no matter the bond, all come back to you. So if we did a change order and increased Reader's contract for that scope, then that $700,000 surplus in contingency also increases, because now we're looking at two different pots of money, if that makes sense. But in the end, it's all going to even out, so. Or you can just choose to leave it as is and not spend the money at all, so. But timeline-wise, in order to have it open in November, when we would start needing lights, we do need a quick approval on that one.
So a couple of questions? Any, any other questions? Go, go for it.
So currently, what is, what are the remaining funds in the 2015 bond?
I'll defer to Godley for that.
Brian? But the renovations to the football field are how much?
$720,000. Oh, the 1.8 million, yes. Mm-hmm. $5 million after the stadium costs get moved from 2021 to 2015.
Okay. So there's, there would be $5 million left in that bond? After the football, yeah.
Field renovations.
Just to make sure I heard you correctly, on page two that has the table, your Phase Three, far right-hand side that shows the projected allowance and contingency of $711,000, I think I heard you say that already has the 720 for field renovation built in?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
If you remember, we talked about that, because when we, the plan was to re-turf the current stadium as soon as we could, right at football stadium, but we want to make sure we don't leave soccer out. We don't want them to have to transfer games or have to play a bunch of, you know, away games, and obviously we want them to place a practice, too, so that was, that's our next field with lights. And the field, it, it needs a little makeover. I was talking.
We've had a couple of injuries, haven't we?
We have Miss Morning Brooker ankle a couple of years ago, and I, I was talking with an alumni last week, telling them about this, and they, they said, you know, that field was built by coaches and players and dads, and, you know, it was, so it needs, needs a little bit of love, but, and that field does serve, obviously, legacy, but I think RBG uses that field, too, on field day and that sort of thing. Am I, am I right? Do you guys come over and use the legacy field at times? Yep, okay.
Does Pee Wee Football use that?
Pee Wee Football does use the field, yes, ma'am, they use the lights and.
And right now, this number includes the field, but not the track. So if we want to consider replacing the track, that would be a separate number.
All right. That's not enough.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's all I have. We'll continue to refine those numbers and, and as needed, bring you an official change order maybe next month.
When did you say that this may be needed, like, for consideration? Did you say by November?
The Phase Three practice field needs to be approved quickly in order to be complete in November.
Well, and actually, we've already got it in there. It's already in the scope, so it doesn't, the practice field doesn't have to be approved.
Yeah, if you all are okay with.
I just wanted to make sure that we're comfortable with, because that's what we'd planned on doing, I just wanted to make sure we were still comfortable with everything.
And then high school Phase Two will probably be back to you next month with an actual change order number.
Yep. And like Aubrey says, there's, on the overall bond, there's still funds there, so this is a lot like a, a budget amendment. We're just moving money from, we've got the money there, so we're just moving to another pot of money to use it.
Any other questions for Aubrey? No? Okay, thank you, Aubrey. All right, next we have stakeholder communication.
Okay, let's start with Pleasant View. Ryan, you want to come up and tell us where we're at?
Good evening, everyone. Is that good? Okay.
I don't have.
Okay, Phase Two's up there. Perfect. So right now, what we're doing is we're wrapping up a few loose ends here. We've got our AV portion, if you'll see out here, we've got the speakers in out in the main courtyard, LED outdoor TV will be going in, it'll be up and running by the eighth. And then right now, we're bringing in AV specifically, come in, program everything in the gym, amphitheater, as well as you'll have some operating doors here this week. Right now, we finally got that going. And so really what we're doing right now is tying up any loose ends, working with principal block, staff, everything like that, making sure everything's ready for teachers coming in. We've had a few coming in, students, everything like that. And then we're keeping a close eye on the grass right now. Some of it has not taken. We had a little bit of irrigation issue, so we'll probably be reseeding that. We're taking, we're just monitoring right now, but after today, I believe, we'll be reseeding that. Other than that, just tying up a few loose ends, next month, we'll be 100% complete. There's maybe a change that came, we're adding some railings for some safety features over here, I think those are mid-September, but really the base scope of work, we're done, programmed everything, everybody will be trained, ready to go on these few lagging items. So really, that's about it. Anything else? Oh, taking care of any warranty items that are coming up, there's a few hot-button items that have come through, working on some kitchen, and then some AC issues that I got with principal block on earlier today, and we'll have those ready for school.
Any questions? Okay, I can't let you off then, I have to ask a question.
Yes, sir.
So I'm going to call it warranty, but you call it whatever it really is, but the ballfields, the playfields, I understand they were sprayed with, you know, hydromulched with something, but obviously there's nothing growing now.
Yes, sir.
So what is the plan to correct that?
We, we have been monitoring it, and we are going to reseed those for you. We're just waiting, I was talking with our landscaper today, and so we are going to get those reseeded for you, and so get watering scheduled, everything like that. Seeding, when it's 110 degrees outside, isn't the best idea, but we will be reseeding those.
Okay. Do we have a tree count? How many trees we've lost?
I don't know the exact number, but I believe it's around 13, Dr. Deere, and so, but those are coming.
Okay, we'll wait until the heat gets, dries down to replace those, correct?
Yes, sir.
On the grass. You said we're still working on some AC issues, that's from the surge we had a couple of months.
MC calls today, we're going to have a crew out here tomorrow taking care of those. And so, again, working closely with Dr. Block and everything, we're walking basically every day, the classrooms, making sure everybody's good.
And we've, and we've taken steps to make sure another surge doesn't knock us out like this again?
Yes, sir, and so there, there's a couple of factors to that, and we're working with Huckabee on getting some monitoring on the primary power as well, and some of them could have come through with the storms that came through, lightning, et cetera, so it looks like it may have been a mixture of both, but we're going to be closely monitoring that.
Okay. And I heard you say we're going to be 100% complete next month, right?
The stair may linger a little bit.
Except for that, which that reminds me of something else. Aubrey, we talked about the stair railing for safety, but we also, we were talking, kicking around fencing in just a little bit of the courtyards, is that still out there?
We took that off.
Okay.
Everything is still compliant.
Right, okay. Dr. Block, is there anything else that Ryan didn't mention that's mission-critical? Okay.
Actually, that leads me to, I was going to ask a question of Dr. Block. Do you? Do you foresee any issues, like, anything getting in the way of instruction when school starts or anything? Like, there's nothing that's, that you're having to plan around, or?
No, we've been talking very closely about that. The gym is the main thing, because they have some pieces in there. They're supposed to be coming back out tomorrow. And then, getting these doors programmed, so they can manually raise and lower them, so they're not a hazard or anything, but they're programming those Thursday. And then, the heat and air. So once all those things are done, that's the big ticket items on the inside of the building that would impact the students. And so, I feel like all that should be, if they get here, when they say they're going to get here, we should be good to go.
Okay. Thank you, Ryan.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. I'm James Jones. I'm the lead superintendent for the Godley High School, which will be the arena and the wild. Right here, this picture depicts, we've got all the bleachers in, up down, up till this area on the right-hand side. We had to move a raker back or to be able to pour this, the ramp walls. We're pouring those later this week. It's going to be three pours, I believe, total, to be able to get that completed. On the inside, we've got first, second, and third floors. We've got all mechanicals going in. This is the back here. It actually, we're a little further than this right now. Where the, on the upper left, where the claw is going to go, we've got, we're getting ready to start framing inside of that. Where, on the second floor, we're putting window frames in. We're already down past that insulation there on the right-hand side. We'll be removing that stair tower down there, so we can finish all that out. Brickwork is all the way around to the southwest side. You can't really see it. It's around the corner, right by the softball field. On the fourth floor, we're framing. We've got on, that shows, third floor. First, second, and third really look like this right here. And then, the fourth floor, we are, that's E, so it's pretty much in the same as the other. And then, on the fourth floor, we're starting to hang hangers for the duck work, and then we'll get ready to start spraying that once we get the roof on. So, right now, we're on the roof there. We're installing curves, roof curves, everything that we need, all the components, so we can start the actual roof, which is in about two weeks right now. This is the connector walkway. Today, we received all the steel for the connector walkway, so we've got 13, 14 more welders that are getting ready to start working on this here tomorrow morning. The electrical line, you see going back on around to the existing building, just where it comes up, that's where we're going to continue moving forward to the building. What else is on there? Oh, this is F. So Wednesday morning, we have a pour at 5:00 a.m. on the balance of the grade beams really more up to the south, but we're starting to set forms coming down to the north. So that's just another view. So, right there, it kind of shows how we pour the beams. And then, probably, I don't think I'm going to do it this week, but next week, we're definitely going to start plumbing, underground plumbing there. Keep that moving. Okay, this is on the east side of the arena. We're actually probably about another 10, 12 feet up right now for this elevator shaft. So we'll have that done probably by the end of the week. Up in, up in the rafters up there, it doesn't show it here, but we've already started our conduit piping, electrical piping across, which will serve lights and the board, everything like that. We've got, on this side, which will be the north side, we've, we're doing a lot of CMU work. But just, just so you know, too, we also, I brought the painter in this morning. We're going to, at the wild, as well as in here, some of the interior rooms, we're going to start block filling and start doing some painting. Also in here, we've already, we're fire spraying, like, above where the bleachers are going, and on this side as well, and we're doing steel work right over the welder. And then, also in the wild, we are going to start painting, doing some tape and floating in there as well. So he's got a, got a big crew coming, probably in the next couple of days. Questions?
It's your favorite question. When do you expect to be completed on the wild? One, the arena, two?
12, 19 on the wild, and 1:15. What? 3:5, sorry.
I was going to say, that changed big time.
Yeah, 3:5 on the arena, sorry. 3:15.
So y'all made up some time on the wild. What on the schedule changed? Last month, it was about a month difference. You were giving us mid-January. So what, what changed on the schedule?
Well, once we, what is going to even continue to change for the better is, once we get that roof on and we're able just to, you know, really go fast in there. That's the contractual date, you know, we're, there is probably some fluff time in there, just to be honest, you know, so, but that's where we're heading towards.
When we walked the wild this past Friday, Terry and I did, we mentioned that it might be nice if we could walk the arena and Phase Three next month prior to our meeting, that we might want to start. We started at 8:00 on Friday morning, and by the time we got finished, it was warm. And if we're going to add things to it, we may want to start at 7:00. And I think Ms. Nix said that she'd be, yes, there you are. Said that she'd be willing to start that early with us, that that way, everybody can put it on their calendar. It'd be the Friday before the meeting. Is that okay?
Other questions? So I have a question for you regarding the walkway.
Yes.
Between existing high school and CTE, do you anticipate that largely being structurally in place or before school starts? If not, what are we doing to ensure safety of our kids?
Well, no, it won't be by the time school starts. You know, the good thing is, we worked hard and we got the steel bumped up, you know, probably a month or, I mean, a month, right? And then, also, I talked to Curtis last week, actually, when the ladies walked. The storefront, the connector, you know, where it ties into the double storefront, the double door that we're going to put in, there were, there was a lot of, like, extra demo and stuff there, so we weren't really going to mess with that, just to stay away from the children. But we will, we'll devise a plan to completely have that, you know, fence like we do. We can go over it with Dr. Deere.
So we'll have a construction fence in place like we do now, obviously isolating that location from your students, as we'll be doing all our construction right there. During the season, which I know is real big, we'll have logistic plans that we're actually going to review with Deere and the team this Thursday at the OAC to coordinate all the transition through there. Right now, we're trying to avoid as much traffic through there on that logistics plan for the season as we can, but as far as students over there during normal business hours, we'll have that construction fence up to make sure there's no cross-traffic through there.
Yeah, my concern is, obviously, when we're, first, kids out there practicing on the field, secondly, on game day, the band egress goes right through that area coming from the band hall.
Exactly. And I know last year, I believe, we placed a temporary sidewalk for y'all to actually get through that area. We're looking at that spot exactly on how to do it, and the logistics plan shows it pretty good, that we've been coordinating with Curtis.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Aubrey. Phase Three?
Yes, sir.
All right. Jeff Stevens, project manager for Reader, going to talk about-
A little closer to the mic, please.
Going to talk about Godley High School. Oh, that makes a difference. Godley High School, Phase Three, sorry. All right, so renderings, always like to show this. Next slide. Okay, so this is, this is where we were as of June 14th. This is what we talked about last month. Had a little bit of ICF form work up, but not much else vertical at that point. This was kind of the same view, and that says overall 614. This was from last Wednesday. I apologize for not updating that. Last Wednesday, we poured, we poured our last ICF pour, and then, I think Friday, we had the only structural CMU all the way to deck. So we're now ready to start steel. Crane was supposed to be there today, crane immobilized today. Steel showed up today. We offloaded and get ready to start swinging steel tomorrow. Just another view, again, last month, a little bit of the ICF up. I think we actually poured that first pour the following Friday from this day. And then, again, another view, similar angle, and this was from last Wednesday. So like I said, all of our ICF is up. We're all, we're ready for structural steel. And another view of the ICF, still showing drone shots. We don't have a whole lot to show inside. Probably won't have a whole lot to show inside the building, not next month, but the following month. We'll be closed in. You'll be able to see progress with framing and interior, not interior finishes, but the shape of the inside. And then, this is a look of, from the, of the field from last Wednesday. We backed off the watering on the large football field. I think it was Saturday, so we can mow today. So we'll mow it a couple of times and then top dress it to get ready for practice starting this fall. And then, the smaller field, we've kind of had to slow, slow the turf down, and that we've been, we got to the point where we're putting turf down faster than we could water it. The irrigation system couldn't quite keep up. We watered the large field, I think we're watering it three times a day. I mean, if you ever walked out there, it was constantly watering, and we're still worrying about it browning. The small field, we got a little ahead of ourselves, and that's why you see that browning up there. Not concerned with it, but we did have to slow down, so we're not complete with turf up there just yet. And that's it for the photos. We're looking at about a month's worth of steel, structural steel going up. Precast panels are supposed to start, I think, the third week of August, and so that's for the storm shelter walls. That is about two weeks' worth of work, and then we'll have all of our structure complete. So probably by, I would say, September 15th, we'll be complete with structure. And we're kind of running the two projects, the two areas of the building somewhat separate. So the storm shelter is always meant to lag a little bit behind the rest of the building, but probably by the middle of September, we'll be up with structural steel, starting on the roof on Area A and B, and then finishing out some of the structure for the storm shelter. And that is everything I had. Any questions?
Completion date?
Still January 24th.
January what?
24th.
24th, thank you.
Any other questions? Go back to the picture of the field real quick. You'll see, obviously, there's only grass on the field. We held off grassing anything around it just to see how the project went. The project's going good, so we do have in there to hydromulch some of the area around the field, so it won't be just grass and dirt. Just F for that.
Yeah, the hydromulch does not take as quickly as, I think my buddies of Satterfield said, hydromulch does not take the heat as well as sod. You can overwater sod and help it, but we're waiting just a little bit to put the hydromulch
Any other questions?
One coming from the wild.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
And it, the well's performing as well as you'd expect, it's just we're asking a lot of it watering that field three times a day. Little bit abnormal.
Lighting for the tennis courts, what's that projected completion date?
That is not me.
Nope, I'm sorry. Back to S and P. Come to the mic, please.
Okay, so we are waiting, like, right now, we are waiting for an electrical panel, which ships Thursday. That electrical panel runs the streetlights, all the tennis court lights. So right now, this morning, he was chipping inside where the panel goes, and he's got to cut some pipes off, so it'll be ready to go. He's going to go ahead and pull from pole base to pole base to pole base and pull his wire, and then he's going to set all the poles. He'll be ready with the pan, I mean, he'll be ready for the panel, but he'll have to get everything hooked up within the panel, but he's going to have its wire pulled. So it's probably going to be, you know, we're shooting for the end of next week. You know, and that's just, whenever they give us a, you know, it's like Amazon, whenever they, we can track it, we can track it. But the sidewalk and the ADA is poured. Cool?
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Construction? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, next, we have public participation. We extend the opportunity for public participation portion of the meeting in compliance with Section 551.007 of the Texas Government Code. We have a couple of individuals that have signed up to speak. Public participation provides the general public the opportunity to address the board regarding topics listed on the agenda. Persons attending the meeting and wishing to participate in the public forum must sign the form and submit prior to, 10 minutes prior to the meeting. Each individual addressing the board will have three minutes to make their presentation. Personal attacks on board members, district employees, or students will not be allowed. All participants are expected to speak with respect and civility and maintain a calm, professional demeanor. Upon the expiration of three minutes, I'll call on the next person that signed up to speak. Please note, the Opens Meeting Act does not require the board to respond to any comments or complaints from a member of the public regarding an agenda item. And we will now begin with Ms. Nova Olsen. And I'll ask Ms. Goodlow to keep track of time.
Good evening. Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972 is a federal civil rights law that prohibits discrimination on the basis of sex in educational programs and activities. All public and private schools must, who receive funding, must comply. Since Title IX became law in 1972, equality has been possible in educational programs and activities. For the first time in 50 years, there's a credible threat to these protections.
Ms. Olsen, if I could ask, pause a second. Please, pause the time. Says that you signed up for construction update?
Stakeholder communication.
Yeah, agenda item.
Stakeholder communication. Number five.
You signed up for construction update?
Number five.
Correct.
I did not write that on the sheet. She wrote that on the sheet. I wrote number five. That's all I wrote.
Okay, well, your form shows construction update, so I'm-
I did not write that.
Just trying to connect-
I didn't write that.
Your reference to-
I didn't write that. I wrote number five.
Okay, then if your topic is not related-
Is stakeholder communication.
Which is construction update.
No. Number five says stakeholder communication. Am I incorrect that number five says that on the sheet? Is that what number five says?
Number five is-
I didn't say 5A or 5B. I said number five.
I got stakeholder communication.
Thank you. And I'm a stakeholder, is that correct?
Of course you are.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I want to actually ask her, she said it was, you said it was about Title IX. I wasn't structured because I was a stakeholder communication regarding, and then you said Title IX. I wasn't structured because I was a stakeholder communication regarding, and then you said Title IX.
Stakeholder communication is about construction in this meeting.
Well, stakeholder communication says stakeholder communication, so I'm a stakeholder and I'm communicating, so-
You don't get to-
Oh, I don't get, I'm just reading, I'm just reading what number five says, which is stakeholder communication.
Yes, ma'am, you don't get to define what our agenda is. It's our, our stakeholder condition, communication for this meeting is construction update.
Oh, that's not what number five says. Number five says stakeholder communication, that's all it says. 5A says construction, but for number five does not say construction, it says stakeholder communication. And as a stakeholder, I'm addressing this board, I'm a taxpayer. So, are you taking away my right to communicate as a stakeholder, under stakeholder communication?
You can communicate about what's on our agenda, and construction update is our stakeholder communication for this meeting.
Number five says stakeholder communication, that's all it says.
I'm not arguing that. 5A provides the details for the agenda. You're, you're more than welcome to speak on construction updates if you care to.
Well, I'm just going to go on record as saying that's incorrect. If number five says stakeholder communication, I'm saying it.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
I believe she's correct, that stakeholder communication is not very specific, and I think we should let her have her three minutes to speak on Title IX.
Ms. Goodlow, how much time is remaining? No, two minutes and 23 seconds is the remaining time.
That's fine, that's fine. I'll pick up where I left off.
Continue.
There's now an attempt to replace it with, um, oh, for the first time in 50 years, there's a credible threat to these protections. We have seen a significant push for change in the definition of sex in our culture. Britannica states individuals having two X chromosomes, XX are female, while XY are male. There's now an attempt to replace it with gender identity, or other similar terms. Why is this important in education arena? There's a document, Federal Register, Volume Eight, number seven, 88, I apologize, number 71, dated Thursday, April 13, 23, Proposed Rules. It's a notice of proposed rulemaking. The Department of Education is seeking right now to change the definition of sex to include gender identity. So, my question is, what have you done, school board and school administration, to make your stakeholders aware of such proposed rule changes that could critically change the lives of your students socially, academically, and in sports? If a person's biological sex is no longer the determining factor of entering bathrooms and locker rooms or being allowed to participate and compete in sports, what will you do? Your very first and foremost job is to assure a safe environment for kids. Is safety suddenly not a priority? The notice of proposed rulemaking, um, states, comments must be received on or before May 15, 2023. Why have I not heard anything from the school board or administration on this subject? Did anyone from Godly ISD send any comments before the deadline to protect the definition of sex as one's biological sex at birth? Does anyone from Godly ISD monitor possible rule changes that may catastro, catastrophically affect students? If not, how are you going to be ready to act before it's too late? Have any of you sought any guidance from anyone on this subject to get a hold of, ahead of a possible change? Let me be clear, as a stakeholder in this school district, I will not tolerate changes in policy that compromise the emotional and physical safety of these kids. Let me further clarify that I expect school board trustees to be the first to come together to educate, educate and communicate its stakeholders. Any possible changes that could seriously change the way programs operate?
Thank you.
Do better.
Okay, next, we have Chris Kittle, uh, on 8H, I believe that is on the handbook.
And HI, I mean, 8I, yes. Yeah, so I'm Dr. Kittle, and I am the education lead of the Tarrant County Chapter of Citizens Defending Freedom. I am here because part of Godly ISD is in Tarrant County, even though I realize most of it is here in Johnson County. I'm speaking tonight on Agenda Item 8H, Student Handbook, and 8I, Student Code of Conduct. Unfortunately, since the agenda does not include copies of either of the proposed handbook or the proposed Student Code of Conduct for the public's review, it's difficult to know what specific areas within these items to address tonight. Therefore, I'm going to do my best. I want to encourage the board to ensure that these policies do not include using bathrooms or locker rooms based on gender identity. A number of progressive organizations are attempting to pressure school administrators to broaden the language of Title IX to include sexual orientation and gender identity when writing school policies. However, this undermines federal law and the legislative authority of the United States Congress. These organizations lean on the misleading guidance of the Department of Education's 2021 Notice of Interpretation in conjunction with President Biden's executive order on the Supreme Court ruling in Bostic versus Clayton County. It must be noted that the court clearly stated that Bostic was a Title VII issue that did not apply to Title IX or any other law. Therefore, the Department of Education's Notice of Interpretation and the executive order are null because it expressly, expressly contradicts Supreme Court precedent. Further, a federal-
Ms. Kittle?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt again. Can we stick to the handbook and the Code of Conduct, please?
Absolutely.
I understand the-
Again, I don't know if gender identity or sexual orientation are, are part of the-
But this agenda item is our handbook and our Code of Conduct.
I understand that, and again, I don't know if sexual identity or gender identity are part of the handbook because there wasn't a copy online for me to be able to review and make sure that this was following within there, because discipline would be part of student conduct.
Please keep focused to the area.
Okay. I have, federal district court in Texas affirmed that sexual orientation and gender identity are not protected categories because Title IX must be read in the original context in which it was drafted in 1972, where sex was understood to be biological and binary. Therefore, bathroom and locker room policy based on gender identity and sexual orientation are unlawful. Additionally, there have been a handful of cases further demonstrating the Bostic ruling does not apply to Title IX issues. The recent federal district court's ruling prevents the Biden administration's Notice of Interpretation and executive order from taking effect in 20 states, including Texas. So, I have copies of a fact sheet and a timeline of legal developments, which I would like to give to you to ensure that you have accurate information as you consider the proposed Student Handbook and the Student Code of Conduct. You were also sent an email with this information as well. So, I urge you to take this information into account as you deliberate further action on this issue, potentially within the Student Code of Conduct and the Student Handbook. Thank you.
Mr. Carnes, you sent us a link to the handbook and, um, today to answer a, a question we had on dress code. Is that not on the website? The handbook, the 2023-24 handbook and Code of Conduct, is it on the website? Okay, I'll be happy to help pull up the website and find it with you after the meeting, if you'd like to stick around, that way you can see it.
All right, next, we have superintendent reports. Dr. D.
Starting with the technology update. Okay, it feels like forever since I got to come tell you that we got to finish something, but we got to finish something, it's super exciting. Chiefly, the network upgrade, the Wi-Fi six that we wanted to put in, I think the first time I talked to y'all about this was maybe two years ago, when we put it in our E-rate cycle to get it done. Well, all of those E-rate pieces finally came in. Probably, uh, the last one was probably six weeks ago. So, all summer, we've been busy rolling out the new Wi-Fi six, and that is in place across the district now. This is actually the first meeting we're hosting on it, it's kind of exciting. Few changes, but, but it's great to have it in place. Past that, uh, we're really leaning into ClassLink, getting ready for school year starting up. So, as we, when we started it last year, you know, we began to pull all of our students' online systems and everything into ClassLink. We're going much farther with that now, we're making it more of a, a central resource center where it's, it's more than just the identity that we're using to get into things online. It's becoming a hub for everything in the classroom through ClassLink. And speaking of everything in the classroom, getting more online, Parent Square is now officially up and running in the community. The Skyward integration is complete, it's pulling information, and the full rollout happened this morning, actually. So, it's going really well so far, from what we can tell. And then, past that, it's been a long time coming, but our 2022-23 security review is finally done. We used to do this in January, kind of gets you caught up on the year. It made a little more sense to get caught up on a real year, the way we do years here in the school. So, this is the end of our 2022-23 school review, security review, sorry. The first slide that I have up here, it's basically who's looking. It's a map of where do we see all of the traffic that comes and just checks for our network to see what's available all the time. On the map there, it's not that Russia isn't looking, we use kind of a geo-block that's basically says, any traffic from Russia isn't allowed here in the first place. I would do that for many other areas, except for, like, say, India and whatnot. A lot of our components come from there. I have to keep communications up in order to get certain updates and things like that through. So, if I could, believe me, I'd, I'd make it much smaller. Canada, as for why they don't knock, they're just polite. South America and Africa, honestly, is just underdeveloped. They don't use the same tools that the rest of the world is using to go and check and see what's happening. And what we're seeing there as far as activity on the network, essentially, we've done really well this year, actually kind of crossed a milestone in making ourselves sort of disappear publicly from the world traffic. But what you're looking at on that traffic on the map is the equivalent of somebody going through, uh, your neighborhood and checking all of the, the doors on your car and your house and everything like that, just to see if it's open. So, even though you can make yourself disappear, the door is still there. That's the people that are coming along and shaking the handle all the time. The next slide is how we interpret that data. The, the volume of it, we'll get to here in a second, because it's kind of amazing. So, this one shows a snapshot, that one bar that jumps up there in, uh, right, right around the, oh, 71 or so is when it happened. That was what was called a zero-day vulnerability. It's basically a, a new vulnerability gets discovered in the wild that hasn't been patched yet, there's no security protections for it, and so, all of these people that are out there looking to see who's susceptible to it, they jump on it, and the traffic jumps way up, this massive spike. And then on the graph there, you can see how we have the little negative 30% trend. What we watch is all that information coming through, those people checking, and we monitor that trend. There's always a baseline of things that's happening. When we see things jump way up or way down, that means it's happening right now, it's a time to get in and check security. Sometimes, we just close ports and shut things off until the traffic dies back down to a normal level, and then open it back up again. The next slide shows a further breakdown. That large purple ring on the right, that was that 71 attack there. That means that basically, whatever groups out there got that information, they're all hitting that same vulnerability at the same time. And even you can see up in the rules activity, where we had 21,000 zero-tier related activity on UDP. That's 21,000 at one, at one instance. The, the timeframe's a little bit odd when this stuff happens. It's, it doesn't, uh, how to word that? It's not set per second or anything like that, it's not like a clock cycle that comes through. It's more like a wave of packets that hits, and then it dies off, and another packet hits. But wave's probably a better way to think of it, think of almost like waves on the shore. So, at this given instance, 21,000 of the packets within this wave are hitting at once, versus when you look on the older vulnerabilities that they're looking for, they're down in the hundreds beneath it. Data volumes, when we talk about those packets, each one of them that hits our network from the outside, it's almost like a little grain of rice, it hits, it's got a little bit of information tied to it, and then that system that we have sitting out there processes it. When we hit that spike back then, we actually had almost 600 million grains of rice at one instance hitting in that wave that had to be analyzed and figured out. This, this slide was actually for you, Mr. Stevens, and I knew you're the, the data guy that would appreciate it. Now, you'd think 600 million, how does, how much does it take? Are we able to handle that volume capacity? Luckily, we are. We can handle about 435 billion is what our current server out there will cover as far as what's coming in. So, we're good for a little while. Now, on known traffic, that was essentially the own-known traffic for people looking out on the inside and coming in. What is being allowed through, we still analyze that traffic to see what's happening. So, this is a map of known traffic that we're monitoring and keeping up on. And specifically, our login analyzer. So, the login analyzer, what it does, will draw up and show us good logins. You can see those in green there on the map. Suspicious logins, those pop up in yellow, those get very heavily monitored as to what's happening through that spot. And then sometimes, you'll see a red login or something like that pop through that basically means our system didn't trust it and just flat blocked it. A lot of times, when a suspicious login comes through, you can see a bunch of them in, in Europe and whatnot. Those things come through on VPNs for different reasons, some of them we don't want here. Some of them are built into the software and devices that we use within the network. And then even those green logins, you notice how the US seems to be covered with them? A lot of those logins are tied to, um, someone using it at home and tying into a network or a cell service that hits their network, and then they just put it out into wherever it happens to be, the nearest tower. And so, that's why they pop up all over the place like that. When we analyze that known traffic coming on the inside, we do a breakdown of the risk analysis of it. I kind of blocked out our accounts with the most risk there in the center, so we don't throw someone's name up there. But, all of those emails, logins, et cetera, the, the risk, the data that moves in and out, that gets cataloged, categorized, so that we can further break that down and see what happens, what's going where, how, et cetera. The number one thing that we watch for, you can see that PII over and enabled risk. We had 161 counts in this instance. I'm wanting to say, this, this particular snapshot was three months in one of our heaviest periods. Some PII, that's personally identifiable information that moves through, that has to do, this came late in the semester, and it has to do with transcripts. Our system's smart enough to recognize that that's there. It flags it as an instance anytime a transcript moves anywhere, so that we track it, knows what hands it's going through essentially on the way out to try and protect our assets inside. And then in summary, this year was, again, the first year where we had zero known critical vulnerabilities at the perimeter. We're really proud of that, because it was kind of a big deal, and we've managed to maintain that status ever since we got it. I'm wanting to say it was last October when we first crossed that mark. So, it's basically removing all of our external identifiers, so that no one knows whose door handle they're shaking, they just shake it anyway. The next step that we're working on this year, our main focus, we want to improve the internal identification and handling of our data, all of our, everything that transfers on the inside. We want to be able to break that down further into what's more sensitive than others, and then kind of shift the way that we move that around within. We want to be able to improve our response protocols and logging. We're pretty solid on that right now, even that server that we were first looking at, where we're getting the data trends and analysis. If that server were to ever get picked up and attacked, that is completely external to the rest of our network. We could bring down that entire device, we'd lose visibility as to who's looking, but it would not infect any of our, our operations. It would just take out a box that sits to the side, essentially. And then lastly, continue to enhance user identity and data protections. This is a big push for us right now. We've, we're starting to, we've already rolled out multi-factor authentication within our department. It's something we're going to have to push out a lot more across the district as we move forward to close a bunch of these holes. But, um, that's kind of it. I didn't want to get too much into details, I don't like to show all of our cards, but that is our security review. Are there any questions?
Job, appreciate-
Job, appreciate all the hard work you've done.
Thanks.
So looking ahead to startup school, are we staged with our portable hotspots and such that were allowed for students to take home? Is that staged, ready to go for if that's still needed again in this upcoming year?
We have actually shrunk the number of our hotspots down significantly, we at one point had gotten up to where we had, I'm going to get the numbers wrong, but I'm wanting to say we had around 25 hotspots for checkout, of which only two were regularly checked out, and they were almost always staff going on trips for different reasons where they were worried about connection and being good to tie it in and do work. So the use for them really waned, it's something that we cut way back on. We have kept a couple to be checked out, but in reality, those hotspots suffer the same thing that the rest of us do on our cellphones out there, they are tying into a cellular network somewhere and the connections are still pretty bad in our district, so they haven't been super useful. Instead, what we're focusing on is trying to create more public guest access areas for our students in different spots for them to come into if they don't have connection at home and use.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank y'all.
Anything else, Dr. Dear? Okay, moving into business items, we'll consider the consent agenda items. Covers the regular minutes, or the minutes from the regular meeting, June 19, the financial reports, the tax reports, the investment monthly reports and cash reports, and the any budget amendments.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented and recommended.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Krista and a second by Terry. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I had some questions that I had emailed, oh, you're fine, I had some questions on some of the items that I had emailed and I hadn't had a response, I was just going to make sure that I had those. On item A2, which was the district financial report, I wanted to know when the board would be able to see actual line items for those budgets rather than just the one-page budget, would we be able to see a breakdown of those actual line items? And then also, I was wondering what the increase in the spending on categories 32, 33, 34, and 41? And then I also wanted to make sure that we have debt service reserve funds available to cover the $3 million deficit. And then on item AB, which was the proposed budget, I saw that there were large increases in the budget from last year, specifically in the areas of supplies and materials, other operating costs, and plant maintenance and operations, and I was wondering what the need for that increase was. And then on item A8C, which was the tax rates, I noticed that the growth rate is actually 17%, not 24% as was calculated on the INS calculation sheet, just wanted to make sure that we weren't going to run into an issue there with a different growth rate. And then on item AE, which was the issuance of a bond sale, again, I noticed the projected growth was 17%, not 24%, and this could cause an issue with the INS tax rate as calculated. And then I also wanted to know how close we are in our taxable values to the 1.8 billion that's projected for next year. And then I also wanted to know where the 1.4 million was coming from to buy the debt down for that. Also had a question.
Ms. Lane? If I could ask one moment, some of those seem to have gone beyond the consent agenda.
I'm sorry, thank you, I'll save those questions.
We can certainly discuss them in just a minute. Okay, so I lost track of the individual questions at that point, so.
Just A2 then, about the budget, an end-up budget for us.
Are you talking about for the 23, 24?
Yes.
Okay, well that'll be AB, I guess I would go back, I heard you say you had sent questions in or asked them regarding the consent agenda, I would ask, did you get the answers to those questions or does that require further discussion?
No, just for item A2, the financial report.
Yes.
Yeah, that's my only question.
So did you get the answer you were looking for or do we need to have further discussion on that?
I think I'm good on that, just the budget was my question.
Okay, again, I'm sorry, I'm trying to make sure we stand.
You're fine.
Stand in line with the agenda. Okay, so any further discussion on the consent agenda?
Just to be clear, the A2 district financial report is for '22, '23, and you're wanting to see the budget line broken down for '23, '24? I just want to make sure.
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right, so A2 is the budget year that we haven't closed out yet, so, but you'll, if we get to the next one, that will be the other. And I want those two.
All right, so I have a motion and a second, any further discussion on the consent agenda All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving to the proposed budget for '23, '24. Brian, the floor is yours, sir.
Okay, so for, just wanted to give you all the same information I gave you all last month, so this is just a summary on the screen right now, that's a summarized version of next year's budget for '23, '24 on the far right column, again, that's premature, we're still looking at the details of each account, each function, and each department, so those will continue to be looked at and changed. I provided with y'all, to y'all, the requested information that was basically non-payroll accounts provided, so by function, so whether that's instruction, library, counselor, you know, extracurricular, nurse, et cetera. So that information was provided to y'all in detail, and so I'll be answering, I'd like to answer any questions on that if you have questions on that information, I think Ms. Lane had some detailed questions. I'm sorry, I wasn't able to keep up with.
Sorry. Yes, so for 8B, I just had noticed, well, I wanted to know when we would be able to see the line items for those budgets?
Those are still under review by me and the department heads and so forth, so we'll be reviewing those details and I'll be providing that to y'all hopefully by the end of this month.
Okay, and then also.
The next board meeting, if not a budget meeting we have.
Okay, and then also was wondering what the increase in the supplies and materials, other operating costs, and plant maintenance and operations over last year's?
For which function, all of them or?
There was pretty much a large increase in all of those areas.
Right, so department heads, various department heads and principals and so forth have submitted their proposed budgets, ones that they would like, like I said, we're going over those again. One of you mentioned, I think, was maintenance, for example, they put budget money in to buy some equipment, very much, muchly needed equipment that they've been asking for for a couple of years. So like I said, those will be reviewed, continue to be reviewed in details, and so those may, those definitely will change before the next meeting.
Do we have a date for our budget workshop yet?
Not yet.
When will we be able to set one, because that probably needs to start happening early August if we stay true to what we've done in years past?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, so next item was the tax rate, so I did, I did want to give you all just kind of an update, so for the, I know this shows that we have about 17% growth, so we're still getting information in from the county, the central appraisal districts, we will finally get, we should be getting our certified values tomorrow, we are expecting about a 25% increase overall for the entire, all three counties combined, and on here it says 17, 1.1%, and that was, that was more conservative, and that was before we knew what they were going to do with the 40,000 homestead exemption, the increase, 60,000 homestead exemption and so forth. So based on what the legislature has passed so far, last month, we were estimating that the MNO tax rate would be .9523, which is about a two-cent decrease right now, it looks like it's going to go down another five cents, so it could be as low as 9053. So again, we have to wait until our values come in, the process is, as our values come in, we have to submit data to TEA. TEA will do now, this year, is a two-step process based on the normal process for giving, giving us our maximum compressed rate in addition to the monies that will be associated with the, will probably be a $60,000 homestead exemption. So those rates will not be finalized until the 5th, 7th of August. So we are, we will have to, once we get the information from the central appraisal districts tomorrow, then I'll be inputting that information into TEA and we'll go from there.
Brian, how do we expect that change, that possible change in homestead exemption to affect us as a school district?
So as a school district, I calculate it, so the simple way to do that, on the INS side is really where we're more concerned about that because on the MNO side, we get the money leveled from, if it decreases, if our tax decreases, then the state kicks in more money, so it really won't affect us on the MNO side. On INS side, so if that's a $60,000 homestead exemption and our INS tax rate is 50 cents, then basically that would be $300 decrease on the INS side per tax account that has a homestead. So obviously, if you know, if you have somebody that has a home and two other properties, whether that's gas wells or ranch land or rental property, they don't get the homestead exemption on those, just on the home that they live in. So basically it's $300 per account. So I think we've got around, between 2,500 to 3,000 accounts, between the three, so we're looking at an eight to nine-hundred thousand dollar decrease on the INS taxable side, if you will, or tax levy. So the current law, it looks like it's going to be passed, the state will make us whole on that amount, because we've already passed bonds, we have a bond election, so they try to make us whole on that, so it will not affect us with our current bonds, but it will affect future bond elections, not bond sales, but bond elections.
It'll lower capacity for future bonds, is that correct, Jeff? And Jeff Roberts can touch on that a little bit here as well.
I did have on the agenda that I would hopefully would be able to get some Hill College information with y'all, I've made multiple phone calls to Hill College and have been able to touch base with Mr. Kirby, so I'm not expecting any major change, we have only, we only have about 2.2 cents anyway on that tax rate, and it's been staying about that same amount for the past two or three years. I'm not anticipating a major change on that, but again, I don't know, I was hoping to get that information to y'all this month, so, but I could not get that from him. And again, there's the information for the tax rates, the tax levies. So again, do y'all have any questions on that information I've provided?
On the INS calculations worksheet, I noticed that the growth rate was projected at 24% instead of the 17%.
Right.
Was that going to cause an issue?
No, it actually probably will be about the 24 to 25%. We were just, the 1.7 number, the 17, which is the 17% that I'm showing on the screen right now, that was based on the central appraisal district giving us values based on the extra homestead exemption, the state has given them directives to give us the higher numbers, then TEA will then take into account the information and change the tax rates.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move to the review of the district investment policy, CDA?
Okay, it's just a common thing we have to do, so I didn't, basically it's, our investment policy is CDA local, which we've adjusted over the past couple, several years, that, we got that out of order, went over a slide for that, sorry. So that basically is CDA local, which is the board-approved policy that y'all have approved over the years, that is not changing at all, so I just wanted to make sure that's something we have to get formal approval on.
Do I have a motion?
A motion to approve the investment policy as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Terry and a second by Marissa, any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. You still have the floor, sir, next we'll consider the issuance and sale of bonds.
Okay, so I'm going to have, ask Mr. Jeff Robert to come up, he's our financial advisor, works with Hilltop Securities, he's going to go over the details on this, just to let y'all know, this is really the final 18 and a half million dollars of the 2021 bond election that was passed by the public, so 2021, we sold the 100 million, 2022, we sold the 50 million, and this will be the final 18 and a half million, which closes out those bonds.
Thank you, Brian, members of the board, Dr. Dear, Jeff Robert with Hilltop Securities, can you hear me?
Please make sure you're close to the mic, sir.
Is this good? Hopefully, okay. Before I get started on the presentation, which as Brian mentioned would be for the issuance of the remaining 2021 authorization, just give you kind of an update on Senate Bill 2 since you were kind of discussing it, it was actually signed today by the governor, so it is going into law. Two weeks ago today, as it was introduced by the Senate, it called for the increase in the homestead exemption from 40,000 to 100,000, and that only bond issuances that had been settled or approved prior to September 1 of 2022 would be held harmless. After some negotiating with the House side, we were happy to see that it was changed to where they said that not only would bond issues that were sold and settled prior to September 1 of '23 be held harmless, but also all authorizations that were passed prior to September 1 of '23 would be held harmless. So I think it answered, ma'am, to your question earlier with regard to the 17% to the 24%, I know that Johnson County had given us their initial estimate based upon the assumption that it would go to 100,000 and there would be no hold harmless, but because there is going to be a hold harmless on that, then really the value of the $40,000 exemption is what we can use for the purpose of calculating the INS tax roll, if you will. So that goes into effect, however, it will not once again impact this upcoming issuance or any of your outstanding debt, as Dr. Dear mentioned, it will have an impact on capacity for future authorizations because we do have that higher homestead exemption for those properties on any of those future authorizations. I'm going to go through very quickly, you have a booklet in front of you, we're here tonight to ask for the board's consideration of a parameter order that would delegate final pricing authority to Dr. Dear and/or Mr. Myers on behalf of the district in terms of finalizing the pricing. If you'll flip over to page two, interest rates are being discussed quite a bit because they have obviously gone up some. I will point out that the Fed is meeting this Wednesday and the thought is that they may go up another 25 basis points, but remember that's the overnight rate that they're going up on, that doesn't mean there's going to be a 25 basis point increase in long-term interest rates. So what I'd like to point out with this graph in the white background, this is the 20-year bond buyer index, so this is the 20-year yield that comes out weekly and it goes all the way back to the early 80s, and you can see in the white background, back in the early 80s, we were over 13% on the 20-year yield, and if you go over all the way to the right, you can see where we are currently. Yes. Yes, long-term interest rates have come up from what I call the COVID rates, as you can see, from kind of two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-two and a half, basically how low interest rates were. But if you look at the averages, this last week, it was three fifty-seven, they're in red. The fifteen-year average for this index is three seventy-one, the ten-year average is three forty-one, the five-year is at three percent. Now, all of those were skewed somewhat by those extremely low rates that we saw during COVID, especially the five-year rate. And I don't think that we'll get back to those levels again unless we have another pandemic or something terribly wrong has occurred. So, long story short, from a historical perspective, we still are at fairly low interest rates. And then the blue graph there at the top right just shows you what the, the index has done over the last year. So, what I've done on this page three, that you can see, if you'll go over to the left, you can see the assumptions that I'm using. Now, I, I don't think that these are actually going to be your tax-based growth assumptions after this upcoming, you know, fiscal two thousand and twenty-four value, which is the value that we should get tomorrow. I believe these are extremely conservative. I don't envision you having single-digit growth. You're in the infant or early stages of your growth, and I think you'll continue to likely see at least ten-plus percent. But to kind of do a bit of a stress test, I said, okay, let's lower the assumptions quite a bit. So, seven and a half for one year, five percent for five years, two and a half percent for five years, and then one percent. I, I believe that those are very conservative and purposefully conservative. And so, if you look there at the top, on the right, you can see the issuance of a hundred million in two thousand and twenty-one, fifty million in twenty-two, and then the projected eighteen and a half million in two thousand and twenty-three. And with these, again, what I believe are extremely conservative tax-based growth assumptions, you can see that we have the ability, in my opinion, to stay at or below fifty cents going forward. Now, clearly, if you actually grow more than what I'm showing, it will allow for future issuance capacity, but I just wanted to do a stress test on just what we have outstanding and just the issuance of this remaining authorization to give some comfort as to, we feel like we can stay at or below fifty cents going forward. On the next page, some of you, or many of you, may be familiar with the parameter bond order and how it works. It's allowable under thirteen seventy-one of Texas government code. Again, the board would delegate final pricing authority to selected pricing officers, in this case, superintendent and/or executive director of finance. Within the order, the parameters include the maximum interest rate, the maximum principal amount of the issuance, the final maturity date, and the expiration of the delegated authority. The only way that the pricing officers can approve the issuance is if all the parameters are met. And then on the last page there, you can see the parameters that I've included. We purposefully use a higher interest rate. I don't want to, you know, throw out a four and a half percent interest rate, and we're at four sixty, and so we're stuck and have to wait a month to come back to the board to get, get the board to approve, so we've used five and a half percent. If we sold right now, I think we'd be in around that four seventy-five-ish area. The final maturity would be fifty-five. Again, maximum principal amount, eighteen point five million, and the authority would be good for three hundred and sixty-five days. Again, we will get the certified values tomorrow. If, for whatever reason, they come in well below the twenty-five percent that we're showing, then we can do one of two things. We could either not issue any of it, or we could decide, hey, how much can we issue if we just wanted to do ten million or something along those lines? So, that's an unknown variable right now that will be known tomorrow, and hopefully by the end of day tomorrow, we can calculate and determine what we're going to do in terms of being able to do all of it, some of it, or if Dr. Dear decided, none of it. So, those are kind of the three options, depending upon where that value comes in. I know I flew through that. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to, happy to answer them.
What is your confidence to get these sold, like, in the next week or two?
You know, I, to me, the value, the value's a number. I don't know a lot about what all goes into it, so it's, it's going to just be completely dependent upon that figure. So, if it comes in tomorrow at around that twenty to twenty-five percent level, I, I feel comfortable. If it comes in below twenty percent, we're probably looking at a, either a lesser amount, or if we wanted to just wait, we could wait.
And Dr. Dear, what will be our communication on that tomorrow?
I have a question. What is the eighteen point five million being used for? It's just paying for the rest of the bond. Is there, okay.
Are there other questions? Okay. Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt an order authorizing the issuance and sale of classes with the public school district, and by the tax for building bonds.
Have a motion by Marissa and a second by Dennis. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Next, we have the report on innovative courses offered at GIST.
Good evening, Dr. Dear and board. My item for you tonight are innovative courses. The bulk of the courses we offer are inside of chapter seventy-four that TEA publishes, but there are a set of courses that they make available that they call innovative courses. These are courses that might not have been needed at the time that they published chapter seventy-four, or a school district identifies an area of need for offering courses to students. And so, they write a proposal for innovative courses, and then those are available for schools across the state to offer to students. The bulk of them are CTE-related, things like our unmanned aerial vehicle course, where we have all of our drone students and the drone certification in, entrepreneurship two, practical entrepreneurship. There is an ag course, some of our health science courses for kinesiology, and our sports medicine students are in there. You have a list in your board packet of all the courses that we do offer that are considered innovative and require board approval. So, this is for information tonight, and we'll bring it net back in August for you to vote on and approve those offerings. But I'm willing to open, open to any questions, if you have any or want clarity on any of those courses as well.
Have we done any kind of survey of our students to see what we're not offering that they would be interested in doing?
So, that's always a conversation with the counselors and myself. We kind of keep tally marks of different things that students request. Hopefully, as we continue to expand our use of School Links, that's a way for us to really pull data from student interest inventories for their career matches, to see where, what it is that they feel like they want to do, tied to their own innate abilities and interests, so that we can match that better. And we also like to listen to local business and industry as far as what the workforce demands are, because we want students graduating with the skills necessary to fill the jobs here locally in our community. We want our, our godly graduates to graduate from high school and then come back and pour into our community and continue to grow our business and industry here.
Are there currently any certifications? I know that in the CTE building, we talked about having all the computer classes and Chromebook repair and things of that nature. Are there certifications now that are offered to our students as far as like Chrome, like technology repair stuff?
They are. So, currently, our students are earning an Acer certification, which is what they need to work on our Chromebooks and do all of that computer repair in-house, which is a cost savings to the district and provides opportunities to have that real-world experience. We reworked a position in the technology department. Mr. Oliver's been really gracious in kind of ideating around how to be innovative in that approach, but there was an individual that retired, and we've turned that position to a halftime teaching, halftime technician position. So, now that technician that does Chromebook repair will actually be teaching the courses. So, they'll have a more in-depth understanding of what's needed for students to be successful there, with the conversations already started about, can we grow that into a Comp TIA A-plus certification or a Cisco certification for those students? So, yeah, there's all conversations there for sure.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Tasby Policy Update Number One Twenty-One.
I'm sorry, can I request a recess so that we can maybe use the restroom and come back?
I'm not hearing.
May I request a recess? So, we can use the restroom and come back?
Yes, we'll take a five-minute recess.
Yeah, I think that far end is worse. At least I'm not staring into the sun. Getting a tan over here, though. Yeah, I didn't see it in the list of meeting dates, so I don't know.
I read the, the, Seth Lee Walker for, for eleven thirty, Sullivan's here to go like thirty. I like the idea that when you go now, the month before, these greens don't tell you much, the picture, so you're in there.
Yeah.
All right, it is seven forty-seven. If I could ask you to take your seat, we will reconvene. Mr. Carnes, floor is yours, sir.
All right, thank you. Good evening. So, policy updates can be, can be pretty long. Fortunately, this is not one of them. So, there are just a few local policies. Just as a reminder, we present and adopt local policies. Legal policies are what they are, and so we inherit those. But so, just a few to go over with you, some minor changes. So, CFB local just is accounting inventories, and just some minor language was changed there. The amount stayed the same. They just added a little language that was based on changes to the general accounting guide. CKE, which is around security personnel, that was moved from CKE to CKEA. None of the language changed. It was just moved to a different heading based on, from security personnel to commissioned peace officers. Now, this one is fun. This one, and I know there was a question about student housing. So, this is around pest management. And so, pest management, they included language now that is intended to apply to district-owned residential property that is primarily used as student housing. So, this is actually a requirement by the Texas Department of Agriculture, and I did find out there's actually one district in the state of Texas that has residential housing. But should y'all decide that we have some residential housing, we can put down some glue traps. So, nothing, I thought that one was, was kind of interesting. COA local simply lists that Lacy Manuel, well, it doesn't list her by name, it just lists that the food, that our food services director is able to procure, procure stuff using, or, you know, food with federal child nutrition funds. CRF, it's, is simply, that's listed there, but it's a template update, that it was just moved into a new template, but, but there, there is that. There was questions around the removal of the term designee. Designee is basically, it is redundant and is being phased out, if you will, because BJA local already gives the superintendent authority to delegate things to, to others. So, anywhere that it's listed that the superintendent needs to do, fill in the blank, he could ask me, he could ask Eric, he could ask multiple people. So, they are just simply phasing that term out. The designee still exists. So, so, the term designee was removed just from, just from the policy. DEA local, very simply, they changed the word bimonthly, changed it to semi-monthly. And so, that was the only change there. DEC local, this is around mental, or a health leave for peace officers, and so, should a significant event arise, they are allowed some time off to deal with that. FD local, this is just ensuring credit for a student that transitions in, ensures that they are given the credits that they, that they deserve. And finally, FFI local, the, this is, this is around bullying. The minimum standards for bullying prevention, which was completed by TEA on January thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-three, includes a requirement for, for policy provisions and for bullying prevention, in which we have those things in place. We have anonymous reporting, we have, we have safe adults, we have, you know, people that, that students and/or staff even. We have anonymous reporting. We have safe adults. We have people that students and/or staff even can go to. So that policy was made just to update the changes made there. So, and that is all of the local policies. So, any questions?
I have a question. I know that you said that designee was redundant because the superintendent has the authority to delegate those responsibilities.
Correct.
However, wouldn't the local policy, having a designee there, allow the board to assign a designee? And so would removing that designee remove authority from the board from being able to delegate those responsibilities? And that would fall solely on the superintendent to delegate?
There are instances where the board has put him in charge of things, and then the superintendent can then designate those things. It is stated in BJA Local that he has that authority. And so removing designee from any subsequent policies does not change the fact that he can still delegate things to, let's say that it was a curriculum issue, he might want to delegate that to the chief academic officer. Or if it was around safety and security, it can still be delegated to. So ultimately, nothing changes. Tasby found that it, determined that it was redundant, and therefore, they've recommended that the term be removed since it's already explicitly stated in BJA.
I guess my question was removing designee from the policy, does that remove the authority for the board to set a designee?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Does the board have that authority?
Does the board have the authority?
To designate?
It comes from you. To designate, it comes from you.
Right. So the board has one employee, and that's me, and then I designate.